Everyone, this is the Gettysburg Stormwater Authority meeting, Monday, April 8th, Eclipse Day 2024. Glad to see everybody here and able to view us. No one has any eye problems, I hope. And welcome. Karen, thanks. Karen handed out an article of Ferguson Township, nothing for us to discuss, but just something to read at your leisure. Not having any announcements and not hearing any announcements. I'd like to move first, as we usually do, to look at three items, our agenda for the evening, approval of all bills, payroll, and the minutes of February 12th, which people weighed in on, I think, and made comments. I know I did, I know Kurt did, and others did as well. So, any questions about any three of those agenda items? Okay. Not hearing any, I will take a motion to accept all three.
So move.
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you, Kurt, and John. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Same sign. Not hearing any, may pass. No public comment here, yet. We're going to move to current business, and that is revenue and expenses. Charles?
Just high level, Fund Nine, the authority is running a deficit year-to-date of $32,300. It's typical, as always is, for the first six months of the year. That will dramatically change come July, in the next several months. In the bank, as of today, there is $696,000 in our AC&amp;B bank account. Obviously, that's larger than our forecast budget for the year, so as we get into pligot discussions later on in the agenda, we can discuss how we wish to handle the reserves that we currently have.
Questions? Deb, payments?
Payments, yes. I, we filed 48 liens, we've got approximately 12 in paid at the total cost for the lien, and we have 36 remaining. They're averaging around $406 each. Adam drafted a letter for the four that have been notorious for not paying for the entire time we've been sending out our fees. I have all the packets ready for that to be mailed out. If you guys are okay with that, and I haven't, we got more payments in over the last, probably, first couple of months after we sent it out, and it's been pretty stagnant lately, except for title companies coming in and paying off some of those, so.
Okay, thank you. Adam, do you want to bring up this issue about the four right now?
Sure.
And about the liens filed, since that's our next agenda?
Yeah, so as Deborah said, we filed a number of liens, as we always do, in February, at what is essentially a flat rate in terms of costs for, you know, court costs, time spent preparing them, postage charges, and so on. In doing that, Deborah had gone through and identified the properties that have not, I'll say, ever paid a stormwater bill from the beginning, which was when they were first due in 2020, pre-pandemic 2020. And there were, at this point, only four of those, which I think was surprisingly low.
Four properties?
Four properties.
Okay.
For which they have not paid a bill in each of the last five years. There's been five rounds, 2020, 21, 22, 23, 24. There's some others that have kind of come and gone during that period. And of those four, it appeared to me, and just looking briefly at the property records, that they all are subject to a mortgage from a commercial lender, and that all of those mortgages indicate that there's a prohibition against the property having any liens or municipal charges encumbering it, because that could potentially become an issue for the bank, should the property fall into foreclosure. My thought was, the property owners apparently do not care that they've had, at this point, five liens filed against them, a number of which are accruing interest. And I tend to think that these banks or mortgage companies don't know that they're leaned. If they had been refinanced, these would have been paid off, but they're just sitting there. So my thought was that maybe we could write to these mortgage companies and essentially just inform them, not say we're going to foreclose, but just tell them, so you're aware, this property is now subject to five years and five rounds' worth of liens in this amount. Give them the figure. Many times, these mortgage companies have escrows for property taxes. Perhaps they will pay them. And then, when they do their review of people's escrows at the end of the year, you know, maybe their escrow payment goes up $50 a month or something to recover that and bring it back into balance. But I, it occurred to me, this might be a way to kind of have these be paid up. That won't incentivize the property owner to pay going forward, but it'll at least get them current-to-date.
Do we suggest in your letter that we ask the mortgage companies to pay them? Or just let them know that these are outstanding?
I tried to strike that. Tried to thread that needle. And I can pass this around. It said, "Because of," giving specific context after all that, "because of the failure of the borrower to make any payments on account or to contact the authority regarding payment of the delinquent accounts, the authority reserves the right to enter a judgment against the borrower and requests the sheriff to sell the property." Didn't say that we would, just said that we are reserving the right. To prevent the potential entry of a judgment and a potential for sale of the property, the authority wishes to inform you as the lender of this delinquency, upon payment in full being made of the blank dollar amount obligation, all claims will be promptly satisfied." So I didn't tell them to pay it, just telling them it exists.
Four properties, four different owners?
Four different owners. Three in the same block. So it's a problem stretch, but yeah, four different property owners. And they're all $100 bills each year. Now, they're considerably more than that at this point, because they've had liens filed and accruing interest, but the initial bill that was not paid for all of them was $100. So these aren't big, these are not businesses that are getting large, four-figure bills because of big parking lots or anything like that.
Is this a protest?
I don't know the folks, I can't speak to that.
So, we have in front of us a motion. This is a motion, we're actually, in a way, well, I would describe it in my parlance, we're putting pressure on them, in actually a pretty nice way. I mean, although they're not going to be happy about this, I'm sure, this is a middle-ground way, I believe, that is enough to get their attention, and hopefully, the attention of somebody else, the mortgage company, who cares?
Most authorize Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority staff to prepare and issue letters to mortgagees of record informing the relevant mortgagees that stormwater accounts on the respective mortgage properties have remained unpaid for a period of five years or more. So I'll make that in the form of a motion. Make that motion.
Anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Pat. Any more discussion?
I do have the packets ready to go, so if we're okay, I can mail these out tomorrow.
Okay, good to know.
Okay.
I figured we would include the filed liens, just make it a little bit more real for these mortgage companies to see these in the documents.
Exactly what we've done.
Yep, and they're all in there.
Good. I think that's, that's what we should do. Okay. Given everything, all right. I'm calling for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Not hearing any, it passes. Thank you very much for your work. Old business, Chad, updates. Stevens?
So I believe on your agenda is the Gettysburg interloop and the Stevens run. I have one other additional engineer's update, and then we can get to those two motions. The other engineer's update is for the Gettysburg Municipal Authority project, where Bream Alley, we're replacing the wall. They're looking to proceed to the bidding phase. One of the steps that they have to do is get a highway occupancy permit from the borough, from Robbie. Sometimes I take a look at those with Robbie whenever there's bigger projects like this one, which I did, and we gave them a list of comments, things that they need to address for cutting into the borough streets and sidewalks. One of those items is, whenever they're replacing the sewer interceptor, there are several locations where there's storm pipes they're going to be undermining with their interceptor, corrugated metal storm pipes. And we all know about corrugated metal pipes. It's, they're going to be failing. Some of them, you can see, there's no bottom in the pipe, they're going to crumble as soon as they try to get closer to them. Our thoughts are that often, whenever you try to band these things together, you just can't. You can't find a piece of pipe to reconnect to, so you've got to go to the next inlet. So, our thoughts are, rather than split hairs with the stormwater, or wait, with the municipal authority, is if we can partner with them to do just that. Instead of construct a 20-foot piece of pipe in this 200-foot stretch, can we replace the whole piece of pipe? The stormwater authority's share of that effort would be purchasing the pipes, and then their share of it would be having their contractor, who's already on-site, put those pipes in. If we can get GMA to agree to that, so far, we've talked to Mark Geis, he didn't have any major objections. Robbie and I passed it by him, he didn't have any objections to that arrangement. We came up with a list of how many different pipes, most of them are 18-inch pipes, there's one-
That's the list up there that you sent, behind you? Is that the list?
Yes, here is the list right here. So you can see 190 feet on Springs, 240 Franklin, so on and so forth. I gave that total number to Robbie, 760 feet, plus or minus. We were looking at $12,676 worth of pipe, if we would be to supply-
That's just the pipe now.
Just a pipe.
They would charge us for the installation?
No, 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 no. Our part of this would be to provide the pipe, and then they would do the installation. Because otherwise, it's going to be on them to buy a new pipe across their trench and try to find a place to-
Okay.
-piece on to these old. Now, just today, I received a response from their engineer that they were concerned, they already have their NPDS permit, which has a limited disturbance already defined, so if they had to outside of that limited disturbance, they're a little bit concerned about that, so we need to give them some more specifics, and there's going to be a little bit of back and forth. But my question to you guys tonight is, are you okay with that arrangement? Does that make sense to you, if we purchase the pipe here? If we can, we don't want to continue down that path with GMA. If you guys just say, no, we're not interested in purchasing that pipe, just let them do their own thing. But wanted to see what you guys' thoughts were before we continued further down that path.
This is one of those deals where it just makes no sense not to do this, you know? So they'd come in and patch 20 feet to get their line through, and then next year, we have to turn around and dig up the whole street to fix more. So why not get it done while it's all tore up at the same time?
And these are inlets to inlets, these numbers?
Yep.
So, limit of disturbance, you know, let's, you know, let's say we're off by 50 feet on each one of these things, I'm just making this up. So what does that really mean?
It means DEP could have an issue with you.
Yeah, they always do with us, I think, sometimes.
Just keep, keep in mind, too, the type of inlet they're trying to get into. If it's a port-in-place inlet that might be collapsing-
Yeah.
-we may have to buy an inlet-
Right.
-along with that.
We're, we're making an assumption that we're going to be able to get to the nearest concrete box and stop there. You never know, when you get to construction, that's not, that's not always the case either, like Robbie's saying. Sometimes you end up replacing a box, and then, where do you stop? Because you replace a box, now you're into the next piece of pipe.
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, what's your worst-case scenario, I guess, is what we need to know?
This is what we're kind of thinking right now, that we're looking at at least a $12,600. If we had a couple, add a couple of inlet boxes, you're looking at, what, 1,500 bucks apiece, approximately, to replace a-
I'd say 2,000 apiece.
We usually figure like 2,500 to installed costs, so at least half of that's the purchase part. It depends how big and how, and, you know, the dimensions of the boxes that we need.
But here again, you dig to the box, and the box crumbles because of its age, what are you going to do at that point? You're going to have to buy the box-
Right.
-and do the job.
And hope that, and hope that the pipe on the other side of it, now you can band on to, you see what I mean? Like, you just keep chasing this thing?
Been there, done that.
Right?
So, realistically, just sitting here doing some numbers, I mean, this could easily be double, that $12,000.
Um, it, it could be, I think the answer is yeah, it could be, do I expect it to be no? I feel like we'll be able to get to most of these inlet boxes. There might be one or two where we have an issue, like I think most of these boxes, we'll be able to. Some of them actually are an end wall. Like, the two, two of them are, you know, where Franklin Street comes to a cul-de-sac right before the railroad tracks. So two of them are just going to cross that cul-de-sac, and then they go to an end wall, where it dumps into the stream. So we know that we're going to have a concrete structure there. All right, so I don't think that it would be double, but there could be a couple of those cases.
So 20 grand?
Maybe, it could be up to 20 grand. Worst-case scenario, I'd be, I would say that would be a better, 12 to 20 grand. But still, the, the flip side of that, having a contractor there that's going to install these while they're already trenching this, do the, and the pavement repairs associated with the trench restoration, it's, it's more than double that, I can tell you.
I think John's right. I mean, I mean, I think, my opinion is, we got to do it. It's one of those things that we didn't forecast, but, you know, welcome to the Stormwater Authority.
Welcome to Gettysburg.
It's good government, whenever we can team with the other municipal authority, and, because they're going to have a pain getting, trying to band these things back together. It's just, I don't see how they're going to do it. Now, now, with the limited disturbance thing, and you were asking that question there, they can adjust the limited disturbance in their permits, so I'm hoping that that's going to be the easy path here. Whenever we're looking at, you know, the limit of disturbance for these things, it's still a trench under a street, so the chance that there's any erosion control associated with these things is minute.
Right.
So I can't imagine that a change to their permit would be an issue, but we'll, we'll continue down, to head down this path. We need to get them some exact numbers, some exact figures on everything, and see where they stand on all of this thing. So I just wanted to kind of bounce that off you guys tonight, and then, I'm assuming that we'll make a more formal decision on this at your, at your meeting next month.
I would say-
In two months.
If the-
Two months, yeah, that's true, it is two months, man.
I would say if the issue of the permit comes up and you're in negotiations, if we'd have to pay you to redo the limit on their permit, or can, or can't you do that?
It wouldn't, it would, it would make sense to keep it with their engineer, with Boukhar. Yeah, that wouldn't make sense to have us get involved just for that really minor line adjustment.
Would, would that number be high enough that it would help if we, for you to negotiate?
Yeah, I thi, I think if, if you're offering that, then yeah, they'd just say, hey, if you needed a couple hundred bucks to pay Boukhar to change their limited disturbance, it still makes sense for us.
Yeah.
I mean, you're not talking about thousands of dollars to change that line, it's a couple hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Resemitting, an amendment to the permit.
Yeah, it's only fair, because that's our pipe.
Yeah, yeah.
It's our problem.
That's right.
Are we going to deal with it now, or are we going to deal with it later? Might as well deal with it now while everything's open.
And this is a significantly sized project with a lot of different DEP permits, but the NPDS is usually governed here locally with, with Deb or Rusty Ryan, so we just hopefully be able to work that out with one of those two folks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So we'll get this, we'll see this again in a couple of months.
And then-
But I think this is the right way to proceed in general.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're in agreement with that.
What's their, if they're now going to bid, what, do they have a projected start date?
I do not know that.
Okay.
This year, that's all I know.
Yeah.
Do you know a better-
Pretty much, pretty much the, like, the end of the year.
It'll, it'll end up being the end of the year at this point, we're already in April.
Well, weren't they originally talking October, November?
They were trying to go sooner, if they could.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll be talking about this again. Charles, we're in the old business area, just to let you know.
Okay, thank you, apologies, you're welcome.
Are we on to the pipe televising next? No, you, Stevens Run channel, wall ownership discussion?
Yes, so, yeah, update on that, we did, oh, thank you. The, we did run this past the council to see where they stand with the ownership of the walls. We discussed it at a workshop meeting first-
Right.
-and then they took it to the following workshop, where they still haven't made any formal motions on this thing, it was still a straw vote, it was a workshop meeting, but there was a pretty much unanimous consensus that they want to pursue ownership of those sections that we're talking about. That's the ones without a structure on it. Keep in mind, we separated the ones with a structure on it from the ones without a structure, and they did suggest that we should head down the path of ownership of the ones without a structure. So the next step for that is to develop that written formal policy so that they can vote on it, and then start the procedure of, with each property, chasing down the title research and/or creating easements and approaching the property owners with getting the ownership. We have to have the ownership before we can take any other steps of, of financing these things or doing construction on these things. The next step is, is to formalize that, that ownership. But the council has, like I said, pretty much unanimously gave direction to staff to start writing that policy, so. Is that, Charles, is that, did I say that accurately? You have anything to add to that?
Tom Slamey.
No, that's, that sums it up.
So, we're not down to the point of who's going to do what?
Right.
When?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, so, yeah. I, I have a feeling it's on me to get the policy started, obviously, I'm going to look to the solicitor's office.
Well, that's right.
Yeah.
And this solicitor is going to look to the borough solicitor, too.
Yeah, exactly. Right.
So, so just that we have a sense, I, I'm not suggesting we have deadlines, but-
Yeah, council's going to start working on it, it's going to take time to do all the title search.
Yeah.
It's going to be months.
Right.
So, I mean, I, I don't see this getting done before the end of the year, I'd be stunned if it does.
Right. And I presume if they're going to do title searches on the properties without a structure on it, they're going to do title searches, the properties that have structures on it, and investigate that, those structures, and maybe how even they got there.
Yeah, and what we're going to do is, so we're focusing our attention, we're going to take it in bite-sized pieces, the, the walls that are the most imminent, you know, the two that I mentioned, the one on Water Street, Water Street, and then right off the middle, those are ones that are worth thinking are imminent failure. In fact, after all the storm events and the little earthquake we got, and talking to Charles, like, I, I drove around to check them, because I wasn't sure that they would still be standing, so.
Somebody would have called you.
Somebody would have called, right? You would think that somebody would have called us, right? But-
Police would have called.
The good news is, everything looked, looked fine, for now. And we have some ideas of maybe how to brace the one on, on Water, right off of Water Street and stuff, but we're hoping that it's going to at least hold up till next year when we can get to that, because like Charles said, I, I don't see us doing any construction this year. Do we get through this, the policy, and then start looking at those, the ownership? We'll, we'll focus on those two first, and then maybe start hitting the rest of them. It's going to be a year until we get through that process, so. Maybe next summer, we can try to do something to brace them, so fingers crossed until then.
Okay, any questions?
Pennant.
After the last meeting, you raised the issue, sent some letters around about possible funding through the Conservation District on the low-volume roads-
Yes.
-program, did anything happen with that?
I don't, I asked Deb to look into that.
I haven't had a chance yet, but I will-
Okay.
-do that.
Yeah, because the reason I'm pushing is, they're up in the six figures on some of these grants, which could help us out a lot-
Okay.
-on this particular project.
Right, yeah, we should, we should look hard at that. If no other discussion on the walls, then the interloop funding, Charles?
Yes.
HTB.
Yeah. Some time ago, we discussed the conundrum that the authority and the borough finds itself in, related to the Gettysburg interloop Phase B. Part of the construction funding for Phase B was CDPG funds to cover streetscape enhancements on the Washington Street segment of Phase B of the interloop. Because of the failure of many years' worth of grant funding requests being denied, we're up against a deadline to use our CDPG funds for the borough, where if they're not used by the middle of next year, the borough will forfeit those funds, which is not desirable in any way. So, knowing that there are components of the interloop specific to the Washington Street segment that benefit both the Stormwater Authority and the Municipal Authority, water and sewer, and the borough's infrastructure, the hole that we were trying to fill with grant requests needs to come from a different source. And so, in front of you is the monies that have been raised by our partners. You can see there is a grant up at the top, DCNR C2P2. There's a good amount of money that's going to be used from the C2P2 for this. You can see our partners with HABBY have done a lot of work raising smaller amounts of money, but in the aggregate, it adds up to a better part of $140, $49,000, but that still leaves a construction gap. So what we're proposing is that is shared with the Stormwater Authority, the Municipal Authority, and the borough. And at the bottom, in the gray boxes, you can see the allocation to fill that. The council has already agreed to the $273,500. Stormwater Authority has agreed to the $225,000, I'm sorry, the Municipal Authority, $225,000. And so, the, the question before this authority tonight is $230,000. And then maybe Chad could talk a little bit about what the authority is getting accomplished with that.
So, so two points to make. The $230,000 will get you somewhere in a range of $400,000 to $500,000 worth of storm pipe, and so far, all of the design's been free. Those are kind of the two points that I'd like to make, and, and Charles mentioned all of those HABBY funds, and they've, that they've collected over the, the years with different pots, and they've given that to the borough, along with borough funds, to pay for the design. The design itself, we're over $200,000 at this point, keep in mind, there's that CSX boring and permit that we had to get. So, so far, the Stormwater Authority hasn't had to burden, burden any of that expense. And then, during construction, there is that boring under the railroad tracks, which is very expensive, but by partnering with GMA and the borough, and you have three different entities, and you're, and you're hitting all of the surface treatment or restorations and everything, you kind of get a bit of, of a bang for your buck with this. So you are getting a, a good return on your investment. That's just what it's going to take in, in order for this project to move forward at this point. And, and, oh, one other thing I wanted to mention is, I, I'm not sure if everybody remembers all the time, that this is the pipe that's teeing us up for the Chambersburg solution. That, that pipe that goes under the old Gettys, Gettysberger, that has been failing and collapsing, and that we've been pouring concrete into Chambersburg Street on a, what, annual basis or bi-annual basis? This pipe will set us up to, to resolve that solution at some point.
And as I recall, go ahead, let's make a-
I was just going to say, so this is just from Stevens, Toronto, and Washington Street up to Washington and Chambersburg?
Yeah, it'll, yeah, it'll take us past the alley, but not all the way, like, we did not get permitting into the state highway for the storm pipe, so it does not go into the right-of-way at Chambersburg Street. Stops short of that.
So you're somewhere-
Between the alley-
-in the parking lot at 101.
Yeah, between the parking, yes, exactly, between the alley and Chambersburg Street, we're in that.
Right now, it's like a pothole.
Yep.
Right now, it's like a pothole in that area.
Now, the water line will go all the way into Chambersburg Street, because the, you have to. The water line's in Chambersburg Street, that's where we have to go.
And as I recall, we were waiting for GMA to give the thumbs up, and they have.
Yes.
Okay, so, and we've talked about this before and about this amount of money.
Just, uh, FYI, this foreshadows a future agenda item later on tonight. Be my recommendation that, once you restrict these funds, that gets now put into the Pliggett, which we'll talk about in a little bit.
Okay, yes, so, we have a motion to adopt Resolution zero-four-zero-eight-two-four-dash-one approving twenty, two-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand towards construction of the Gettysburg Inner Loop Gill Phase B2B. That's the motion.
So...
Uh, let's, any, any discussion?
Yeah, I, didn't we ever already approve something for this?
We talked about this, and that's why I said, I think we waited.
A hundred and fifty thousand's what I remember.
No, oh, no, it's always been this, it, it may way back when, it might have been that, then it went up to, two, two-thirty's always been, at, at least in the back of my mind.
So, what you're saying is we didn't, my recollection is fuzzy that we, we didn't actually approve it, we just talked about it?
We didn't, and that's why I said, uh, uh, I thought we did, no, we waited for GMA. We wanted to hear from GMA, and we hadn't heard, you know, we were ready to move, and we need a partner, and GMA was the partner.
Looked at minutes, but I thought we approved the contingent on them approving their part of it.
My notes say we committed to two-hundred-and-thirty, but we didn't formally approve it.
Right.
Good.
There was a bit of a chicken and an egg with three different entities that all had to agree to their pieces of the puzzle, so what, what comes first?
Right, so do I have a motion to approve, to, um, second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by...
You have discussion, right?
Oh, yeah, oh, I, I thought maybe we were done.
All right, we gotta make this one contingent also on, did they already approve it, GMA?
Yep, yes, yeah, yeah.
I stand up, okay.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Not hearing any, it passes, thank you. New business, Pliggett.
Pliggett is an acronym that stands for Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust. It is a, it, it's where municipalities pool their money and invest it in large chunks at a time. And what we mean by chunks is a million dollars or more. Um, now, you don't need a million dollars for certain of their accounts, but if you wanna invest in term accounts, you'll need a million dollars. Um, so, for example, the two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand that the authority just approved, we would go to Pliggett and say, here's two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, once you come up with the balance, they have a, a million dollars and they invest, and then you can see today's rates are, uh, considerably more favorable than what we're currently getting out of AC&amp;B.
Right, and AC&amp;B rates are, like, less than two?
Like, one.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not good at all.
Right.
Um, despite us asking for more favorable rates. So you can see, uh, there's different types of accounts you can invest in. Uh, the class accounts, the reserve accounts, those are liquid, so you can liquid, liquefy those monies at any time if you have a bill that you need to pay. Uh, then you can see, as you move down to the term accounts, uh, some of the rates are even more favorable than the liquid accounts, so ninety days right now is at five-point-four-three percent, which is, you know, will add up pretty quickly if you're investing two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, uh, even if it's only for ninety, ninety days, which I think would be recommended, because I, Chad, you don't think we're gonna need that money in the next ninety days? I'm, I'm assuming.
Got my fingers crossed.
Yeah, so, so you see, we can let it sit there for ninety days at a very favorable rate.
Right.
Um, so, uh, Adam did the research, authorities are able to invest, uh, with other local governments, uh, an authority is a quasi-government, uh, entity, uh, and so if the, the board wishes to move this direction, there's a resolution that, uh, can be adopted tonight, and then we can, uh, set that up with, uh, Pliggett and transfer the two-thirty into account with them.
Is there any cost to us to set up this account or any, no cost, just a return?
Initiation fees, correct, other than staff time.
All right.
Which we're paying for anyway.
Which you're paying for.
I haven't.
Any discussion?
Well, it sounds like it beats the, uh, AC&amp;B rate for sure.
Sounds good.
Just so you know, all the borough's reserve funds, better part of four million dollars is currently sitting in Pliggett.
It's a very popular option.
Well, it's our fiduciary responsibility.
Right.
We can't leave it in that account, in AC&amp;B, when we're seeing this, and it's, it's insured, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Insured by whom?
FD, is it FDIC or is it the state?
I don't believe it's FDIC, I think it's the Commonwealth itself.
I believe that would, that makes sense, but I'd, I'd have to double-check on that.
I'm, I'm not sure.
It's their revenue, it's their stream of revenue, I think.
So you want a motion?
Yes, unless, unless there's any other questions, I entertain a motion. The motion is, adopt, um, Resolution number zero-four-zero-eight-two-four-dash-two, authorizing the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority to invest reserve funds with the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, and that's Pliggett.
I'll move that.
Okay, thank you, second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Pat.
And I have some discussion too.
Okay.
Okay, which one?
This is time, this is time.
Uh, which one of those three are we gonna put it in, and who's gonna make that decision?
So, uh, currently, the way it works is council will authorize a transfer to Pliggett, and then, uh, I, I've been basically the one making the, the decisions on the term and, you know, the favorable rate, which to put it.
Maybe with the cash flow, so you can determine if there's any restrictions, and why does the council have to approve that? Wouldn't the authority have the authority to do that?
You mean to empower Charles to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Since our funds, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I, well, well, that, that makes, it makes sense for me in the, the borough, because I'm officially the borough's treasurer.
Right.
But there is no such entity for the authority, so I don't...
I think the idea here is just to have it documented that it was discussed and that we authorized this to be a thing, for lack of a better term.
And that we also recognize that it's gonna be your duty to invest it.
Right.
According to what the snapshot is today, based on the rates.
Yeah, I mean, I'm always gonna go for the highest rate in a timeline that makes sense for us.
Right.
It's, you know, if, if we need the money before ninety days, I'm not gonna put it in a ninety-day term.
And, and as you said, it's, it's purely a cash flow issue.
Yeah, but the bigger issue to me right now is waiting for the council to approve these. I mean, does that mean they have to approve all our cash transactions?
I, I think, when you said about historically, you were speaking about when the borough invest funds with Pliggett. You're not speaking that the borough council would take action to authorize this investment in Pliggett?
They're not authorizing each specific investment.
Entity, as, as, and I think that's the point, that we're an authority, and they're seeing, they're obviously a separate governmental entity, so this is under our umbrella, not under theirs.
So...
Which goes back to, why did they have to approve it?
I, I don't think that...
It's, it's within, so, Fund One is a general fund. We currently now have two banks under Fund One. AC&amp;B is where our liquid cash is sitting. And Pliggett is where our term cash is sitting. It's all still Fund One money.
We've co-mingled?
No, we haven't co-mingled anything. So this will be Fund Nine money with two banks. AC&amp;B for cutting monthly checks, and Pliggett for term. And then when terms come up, we can transfer it to AC&amp;B, it's still in Fund Nine.
That's us.
That's us, Fund Nine. You're just transferring Fund Nine from one bank to another.
Understand that part.
You good?
I guess so.
The borough is not taking action on this, I think, is what they're saying.
No, the borough, no, this is not borough money.
Is it not a borough issue?
That's what my original question was, why do we have to get it?
But we don't, we don't.
Okay, good.
When Charles brought this up, I think he was saying, historically, when the borough has been in this position, and we're just doing best funds, like, and not, not saying that the borough would need to somehow ratify this.
Right, or borrow our funds.
Okay, it's undisgusting.
No, there's definitely no co-mingling. All right, hearing this motion being ma, is there a, there is a second, there is a second to this?
A second to it, yeah.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Not hearing any, it passes, thank you.
Just to be clear, who, who made the first and who was the second?
I made the second.
I made the motion.
Kurt made the motion, I read it, Kurt. Okay, we have twenty minutes to go, because the borough has a special meeting at six-thirty. So we need to get through the rest of this, um, agenda in a timely fashion.
So, uh, the next is Cozen-O'Connor Public Strategies. Uh, previously, uh, we, I showed a diagram of, going back to 2012, I think it was, all the voluminous number of grants that the municipality had applied for over time, and was quite successful at receiving millions of dollars of, of grant funds. The, uh, something happened in 2018 where that pivoted, where we continue to apply for large sums of, of grant funding, but now we're not being successful at obtaining those. So, uh, Cozen-O'Connor Public Strategies is a lobbying firm. The borough council looked at this lobbying firm in the effort of engaging their services to build the relationships that matter, so that these, uh, grant requests can be ultimately successful. Um, one we currently have, that we really would like Cozen to, to, to look into and, and advocate, is the, the Raise Grant, which is the better part of a twelve-million-dollar grant request, so that we can get the Baltimore Street project done, of which there is a stormwater component, a fairly significant one. The council looked at this, uh, at their last meeting, has agreed to go this route. Um, it's a very flexible engagement, meaning it's severable at any time, uh, by either party with a simple thirty-day notice. Uh, they are operating on a, a monthly retainer of six-thousand dollars, so the concept here is to share that cost among the Stormwater Authority, the borough, and GMA, because all three entities have skin in the game on these, these very large projects. Uh, so this motion in front of you, um, would be committing to a two-thousand-dollar share of that monthly retainer, uh, and then, uh, hopefully, we'll know by the end of the year whether we're, we're successful. If we are successful, we can ha, revisit that, and if we wanna continue their services, or at that point, we could separate.
And GMA has agreed to this?
In principle, they have, but they are, and Pat, I think you've probably been part of these discussions, maybe. Are you still on their board?
No.
No, you're not, okay.
My wife Susan was on the board.
Okay, um... They have not committed their third, uh, but the, the council has committed that wherever the hole is, the borough will pick up the difference.
Oh, okay, okay, so, our number is two-thousand?
Correct.
And it's, it's roughly four?
I'd say the...
Nine month, I mean...
Eight to nine months, until we know how the Raise Grant comes out.
The, the three, um, client success stories they included were all for for-profit entities. What is their background with governmental entities to lobby another? We're, we're lobbying the state and the feds, right?
Right.
So, I, I, I can't really speak to that. I do know they have had multiple other governments, that they've worked with, Philadelphia specifically, I know they've done a lot of grant work with Philadelphia and Pittsburgh.
Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, they ref, reference, but...
Right.
So, would we be one of many, or?
I, I don't know how many clients they have.
I can say that, sitting in on some of these comments, Paul, um, it seems to me, uh, I've, I've taken away that they understand small communities. Well, it's, you know, I, I, I can't cite townships or small, but in their discussions, I think they understand the small people, and they also understand what it takes to get money from the state and the feds. They are, they are lobbyists, is what they are, you know, and, um, they know how to play the game, and we need...
They know how to get to people we don't.
That's right, exactly what I was gonna say. They know the people, they know the players.
At the end of the day, these grants are very political, and by our own devices, we don't have the political clout locally to make a difference, in my opinion. Do they diagnose or explain why they believe we have not been successful? Is that part of what they offer? Sure, nothing I wanna say publicly. Right, but if we would be able to, after that expires, that time, could we benefit from anything they gave us going forward? I would think so. I mean, this is about relationship building, so... I was just saying, I mean, this commitment is for nine months, but could it outlast the time of the contract by whatever sort of advice they offer? We're, we're, we, we will get to know people we don't currently know.
Especially staff, Pat.
Yeah, I put some thought into it, not a whole lot, but, uh, my experience on grants is that, uh, particularly technical grants, somebody like Chad usually does the bulk of the work, fills out the technical part. Like, the term of consultancy is that a lot of times, my experience is, they come, they ask you all the information, and they, you know, so there's not less work for us typically. We still have to give them all the information. And I think, if we had a specific targeted grant that we were concerned with, I'd be more inclined to look at this favorably, but, uh, if, if we do, if we do, what is it, I guess, is the question.
Well, it's the, it's the Baltimore Street, and I, I, I understand perfectly what you're saying. That was one of my questions, like, what's in it for us? Why are we doing this? Then it became clear, once you literally dig down into it, drill down, that Baltimore Street is as bad as everything else in the town, in the infrastructure, and Chad, what's the number for us, uh, in stormwater, just stormwater?
It, it's over a million, yeah, it's over a million, yeah. Well, and, and I think, I think I wanna make two points, so, so first of all, these, these folks are not grant writers. They are lobbyists. Pat's right, they're still gonna be, if we're gonna go after grants, that is still gonna take somebody like CS Davidson or Michael Baker International. So the grants that we have right now that we've submitted for Baltimore Street for Gateway Connectivity was submitted by Michael Baker International, they're engineers. Uh, these folks are now gonna follow that grant application and try to hopefully make us successful at getting the funds. It's over, over ten million dollars was requested, and in that ten million, over a million of it's stormwater management-related. But they're not going to, that's the other thing, is, is that they, one of the things I gathered from our meetings is they don't wanna look at just grants either. They're gonna look at, they're gonna go to these politicians and say, hey, do you guys realize that there's only five thousand people in Gettysburg that are footing the bill for three million, three million visitors every year? And what is the federal government doing to help Gettysburg, and outside of just grants? So they are gonna be, seeing if there's other things that they can do. We made it, to, to Pat's point, we did create a spreadsheet, we, we have it distributed with, with the Gadsburg Municipal Authority. They put some, some, um, feedback into it, but we have, like, our, our top six projects, there's three or four from Gadsburg Municipal Authority, there's a well they wanna develop. Um, our big one is our wall proj, Stevens Wall Project, uh, which we know is a five-to-eight-million-dollar project. Um, and then the Baltimore Streets, actually, that one, we put at the top, because we do have a grant application, our Raise Grant is in as we speak, so we made that our top priority. So that's kind of been teed up with them, they know what are our important things, but they wanna, they wanna start this as, hey, Gettysburg needs help in general. So if there's other funds out there, federal government has a million dollars they wanna give to Gettysburg, we'll find a project for it.
So we're essentially paying for political influence, right? That's, that's what, that's what it boils down to. No, no technical grant writing or...
Right.
And also, it sounds like the capacity to put together presentations or make arguments to the right people about the thing you just said, it sounds, that sounds great to me.
Any other comments, questions, Kurt?
Well, it seems that if we commit to nine months and then they tell us it's... Well, it seems that if we commit to nine months and then they tell us it's going to be any month beyond here now, we'll have to make a judgment down the road. Do we continue this or not, right?
So what I hear you saying is, should we look at this and say, we're good on this until the end of the calendar year and then we reassess?
I think we should revisit it at the end of the year.
Well, this Raise Grant, first I've heard of it actually, but the—when's it due?
It's already submitted.
It's already submitted. Okay, when's the grant period?
I think November. We'll know.
We'll know by November whether we're successful or not.
So this is—you have to strike when it's hot. It's hot right now because people in Washington are already beginning to evaluate the merits of all their applicants. So we need to get someone in there to start advocating for us.
So it's state and federal? It's Gettysburg and Washington?
Yeah, they have connections involved.
And this Raise Grant has been submitted three times consecutive—for the past three years it's been submitted, so—and it's—we've been failing. We've been close, rated high, but just not enough—
Every year it comes back. Every year it comes back, highly recommended, but still isn't funded. So I think the only thing missing—so the—to Pat's point, the technical points have been answered through the application process, you know, the cost benefit analysis of the project. We're missing the political will.
So if we're this close and we're asking to invest eighteen thousand with a possible return of twelve million?
That's right.
That's right.
Sounds like a good gamble.
Yep.
No, I put more gamble to it, but okay. Investment in quotes.
Here's my powerball ticker, right?
Maybe a little better than that. Okay. I will read this motion. "A motion to authorize the execution of a reimbursement agreement with Main Street Gettysburg, Inc., by which the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority will receive lobbying and public affairs support from Cozen O'Connor Public Strategies with Main Street Gettysburg, Inc., dispersing all payments owed to Cozen O'Connor Public Strategies and Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority reimbursing Main Street Gettysburg in the amount of two thousand per month on an ongoing basis until such time as the arrangement between Main Street Gettysburg, Inc. and Cozen O'Connor Public Strategies is terminated by either party." And Main Street Gettysburg, as you can see, is the lead dog on this. They want to deal with one group and, you know, you can't blame them instead of multiple groups. Any further discussion? That motion being read, would someone like to second it?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Not hearing any. It passes, so we can move on. Thank you.
Seven minutes.
Got it.
You can do it in six.
Chad, you got it.
So—
You see the timeframe, man.
You know, we are working on two projects. One is East Lincoln Street with Gettysburg Municipal Authority and Columbia Gas are doing work in there. We're doing a collaborated effort to replace our storm drains in that same location. We wanted to look at this regionally. If we're going to replace the storm drains in there, exactly how we're going to get these things to map up for the reasons we just said earlier. As soon as you start replacing corrugated metal pipes, you almost need to chase these things all the way down to the creek. So we got those pipes mapped on East Lincoln. We also did the same thing. We got all the pipes mapped on the Lincoln Highland Johns area. The—we're—as—we've mapped them the best we can. We still know that there are some of these pipes that go under buildings. We're not exactly sure where all of them are, but we've mapped them the best we can. The next step is to televise the pipes to make—to see what is connected to them, find the ones where we're not exactly sure where it is. So we got our price from USG. This is the same utility group, the televising group that we've gotten to do other projects. The price that we have, it's summarized—it's summed on your motion, eleven thousand four fifty, but it equates to nine thousand eight hundred dollars worth of CCTV truck and then sixteen hundred dollars for the flaggers. There is some highway that they're going to have to flag traffic while they're doing this. So we were pretty happy with that price. We're going to—what our idea is to get both of these projects televised at the same time. Our priority is the Lincoln project because that's—we have a deadline with Columbia Gas and Gettysburg Municipal Authority, but we get more of a bang for the buck if we get them all televised while we're at it, while we have them there. We think—just to give you an example, a comparison, we've gotten—we've done televising before for about five thousand dollars. This is about three times the amount of pipes that we're going to televise on this project for about twice the money. So it's a pretty good bang for the buck because we're doing them both at the same time, or we would like to do both of them at the same time.
Okay.
Question, Kurt?
Okay.
Pardon my ignorance, does—in this case, does televise mean run a camera through the pipes to inspect them?
There's a little robotic—remote control robotic thing tied to a rope and it sends a signal back so you can see the televising. Now they run this little—this little remote control car down the pipe as far as they can. Sometimes our corrugated metal pipes, you can't get very far and you fall into a hole or something and then you stop because they don't want to lose their very expensive apparatus in a pipe. So we get as much as we can and that's exactly what it is. It's literally giving us video footage. Then you can see if there's—a lot of times there's a sump pump tied into the side of a pipe, roof leader tied in. You won't know where all that is until you get it televised.
Okay. And remind me, what's Columbia Gas's timeframe?
Next year. Next year they would like to start—
Right.
—moving on this project.
So this is a great example of something that was never on our planning table at all, and all of a sudden, it's there now. And some of this is going to have to be replaced. As we—as we go down these pipes, we're going to find some nasty stuff, I guess.
And I think the only other thing to mention about the motion on your agenda is, this is for—the typically when we get these televising, we don't go through the engineer because then there's more accounting and markups and stuff. So this is something that the borough contracts directly with USG to get this done. Again, this is typical—typical business for us.
And Robbie will help coordinate this, right? I will read the motion. "A motion to approve a contract with Utility Services Group, USG, in the amount of eleven thousand four fifty for the televising of storm sewers on Highland and Lincoln Avenues. Charles R. Gabel, M.P.A., Borough Manager, hereby authorized to execute the contract on behalf of the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority." Any more discussion?
Need a second.
Right, yeah, I'm just—could I have a second? Someone want a second? I guess Kurt raises his hand first. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Not hearing any. It passes. Thank you. Time for public comment. No public comment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Discussion, I have to call that.
It's over. Excuse me, do you have a question?
This thing that was saying—I who got this? Is it this article?
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
The meeting is over.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call to meeting—call to order this hearing. This is a hearing of the Borough of Gettysburg on the subject of zoning text amendment—sorry, lost my agenda. On the subject of adding the use of library to the Institutional One zoning district. The purpose of this hearing is to hear—receive public comment from anybody and everyone who wishes to speak on this subject. This is not an opportunity for council to opine. This is where we hear what you have to say. We do have a meeting at seven o'clock, so if we can keep this to twenty-five minutes, I would like to. Everybody who would like to make public comment will have an opportunity, however. We do ask you keep your comments limited to five minutes. Please use the podium. We need a name and also your address of residence. And in the interest of expediency, if we could form a line at the podium for everybody who would like to speak, that'll help us cycle through this in an efficient manner. So... The first thing I'd like to do is get some—just a brief background and review of this issue from Mr. Whitmore, our planning director.
Good evening. This has been on the Borough Council's agenda for a while now. The—basically, I have before you been in the packet that was provided, the recommendation from Planning Commission and the recommendation provided by the Adams County Office of Planning and Development. Additionally, there was a staff report in the packet. That information's available online for the guests watching. Basically, the Planning Commission on March eighteenth, 2024, they voted four to one to recommend approval of the text amendment permitting land—library land uses as permitted land use in the INS One Institutional District. And they utilized five findings of fact based on staff's recommendations of that effect, institutional district presently containing uses of a similar character to libraries, Cumberland Township's adjoining zoning district permitting libraries, the likelihood that libraries will be permitted use in areas currently compromising the institutional district following the comprehensive rezoning, and the importance of ensuring patron accessibility via adequate additional parking. Adams County Office of Planning and Development provide comment that votes zoning ordinance amendment, if adopted, would include libraries permitted use in the Institutional I One—Institutional INS One District. To permit libraries in these areas would not be out of character with uses currently permitted in that district, and it appears logical to include along with other academic and related type uses. Also, does not—it does appear that the borough intends to include library museum as a permitted use in the institutional district currently proposed in the new ordinance rewrite. Therefore, we—then that would be Adams County Office of Planning and Development, have no objection to the adoption of this amendment as submitted.
Great. Thank you. So I just wanted to remind everybody before we open this up for public comment, the question before us is not whether anyone in this room thinks the library can or should move. It is whether the use of library should be added to the institutional zone. With that, public comment. And again, I ask everybody who'd like to speak to go ahead and form a line and let's move through. Please don't be shy. Come on up.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Carol N. Delo and I live in Cumberland Township, 150 Ridgewood Drive in Gettysburg. And I guess I have a question, first of all, because I'll show my ignorance here, but what is that INS? What is that—where is that located when you speak of that particular district? Where specifically would that proposal be for the library at this time?
So the purpose of this hearing is not to answer questions.
Okay.
We are here to hear public comment.
Okay, well, I'll make a public comment. My understanding is that there were—a proposal was to be on the grounds of the Lutheran Seminary where there were three—I guess we'll call them dorms, but they were housing for the students—that they would be demolished and a library would be placed there. And my thoughts were, would there be a better place? For example, maybe the rec park? And I know there'd be some provisions that would have to be addressed, but a rec park would be good for the community because it has a lot of land, it has parking, it would allow for the students after school to utilize it, and it would be a place where people in the community could walk. It's not always easy to get out to the seminary. So that would be my comment as a possible place where we might place the library. Thank you.
Again, I just want to remind everybody, that's not the question in front of us. It's whether or not to add the use of library to the institutional zone. Any other public comment?
Good evening. Scott English, business owner, sixty-six, sixty-eight West High Street. I reside at twelve-ten Pumping Station Road in Gettysburg. I want to thank you all for working for the residents and business owners, the community of Gettysburg. I understand this is not about moving of the library here on the corner of Baltimore and High Street, but we all know that's exactly what the library system has come and proposed to the Borough Council and why they want the zoning text amendment done. I'm here to speak against approval of the current zoning text amendment as written that would allow the construction or the use of libraries in the institutional zone up on Seminary Avenue. Besides the perfect location of the current building, promoting green and sustainable community for present and future generations and within walking distance of most residents from town, the limited parking encourages walking and riding your bike to the library. Is that an acceptable reuse of the existing structures of the seminary? Why not use them for—you know, we have a housing shortage in Adams County and specifically the borough. Why not use that for housing, that site? And just to remind everybody in the room that if there's any funding, one dollar of federal funding used on this project, the NEPA process kicks in. That will include a lot of red tape for that site specifically to include Phase One archaeological surveys. And if anything is found out there, you go to a Phase Two and Phase Three. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that when you do switch the use out there and you do allow for other construction, there's going to be a lot of other hoops to jump through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Again, I'll ask anybody who wants to speak, please form a line so we can move through this efficiently.
Hi, my name is Robin Wagner and I'm the dean of the library at Gettysburg College. And I'm supportive of this amendment to consider and give the library, the public library, the flexibility of considering an alternate site. I'm not saying that it should be the seminary. I'm just saying that it would be good for the library to have that opportunity to be able to look at other institutional—what did you call it? Institutional districts in this town. I served on the public library board for almost a decade, about a decade ago, and we were having this exact same conversation about stay in town or not. And I will say that from my experience as a professional librarian, we do not have a 21st century library in Gettysburg, and that to me seemed a little embarrassing. It would be very hard to turn the building that we have right now on Baltimore Street, as beautiful as it is, into a 21st century library because there are many, many challenges. And when you're done spending that money, a purpose-built institution somewhere in this town would be so good for this town. I have my own personal opinion about where that should be, and that's not what this meeting's about, but I would like to see my colleagues at the public library have that flexibility to explore other spaces in this town that might suit the needs for 21st century library. So thank you.
Any further public comment?
I'm Dorothy Pule and I live at 231 Springs Avenue in the borough, and I am here this evening representing the Adams County Library System. The last time I addressed council on this subject, the podium was at the opposite end of the room, and I made a pitch for relocating the library to the rec park. So how did we get to this point this evening? Planning for the main library goes back over a decade to 2012, when we brought in C.S. Davison, and it might even have been you, Chad Claybaugh, to assess the issues with the Baltimore Street building. At that time, cost estimates to remedy the deficiencies and renovate the building were over seven million dollars. The project was subsequently shelved while the board and administration looked at ways to raise these funds. Finally, in 2020, a new building committee was formed to consider our options. To renovate or move or build a new building became the question. No one denies that 140 Baltimore Street is an iconic landmark here in Gettysburg. However, that seven million dollar figure for renovations has now doubled to thirteen to fifteen million and would not solve the number one complaint from patrons: no parking. Have you ever asked yourself why the United States Postal Service, who built that building and occupied it for over ninety years, decided to move to Beaufort Avenue? I suspect that they look— I suspect that they looked at it and looked into the future and saw many of the challenges that the library is facing now 30 years later. The board of the library unanimously chose to look for a location in the borough to build a new building. And the search for a suitable site began. The building committee considered nearly every possible location, including those mentioned recently by op-eds in the local press. We thought we had found the perfect solution at the rec park. Hence my visit to you in 2021. When that option was deemed not to be viable, we looked again. Over a year ago, Adams County Library System entered into a contract with the United Lutheran Seminary to purchase a 4.7 acre tract of land between the YWCA and the Bearfield Road. Under the stipulations in our contract, the library is required to obtain a subdivision to remove that tract from the rest of the seminary property. This tract spans both the borough of Gettysburg and Cumberland Township. Both municipalities have included the tract in their institutional zones under their respective zoning codes. In completing our work for the subdivision, the library board was surprised to discover a significant discrepancy between those two zoning codes. Cumberland Township's institutional zone specifically includes libraries as a permitted use. The boroughs does not. Thus, we are requesting that the Borough Council remedy this disparity through the adoption of a text amendment to the existing zoning ordinance and specifically mention libraries as a principal use by right in the institutional zone. The seminary has been very patient as we work through the subdivision process. They have already extended our contract for closing twice. However, the clock is ticking. Our date now is on or before December 31st, 2024. Thank you for your consideration in considering this text amendment.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, everyone. Stephen Voorhees, 201 North Washington Street in Gettysburg. As someone who uses the library, I think it's adequate and it serves the needs of the community. Why fix, why break something that's not, that's not broken? We need a historic library in town, not a 21st century run-of-the-mill building. We need something that's distinctive. Chambersburg has their library. It's the old post office, beautiful library, same thing. As far as approving or disapproving this ordinance, you've got to think ahead, what happens to the building afterwards? It could be, they could put anything there. And it's right in the heart of the community. It's architecturally distinctive. And it's been there since 1913, when the Civil War veterans were still coming back to visit the town. I mean, it's part of the town. It's part of the town's story. Eisenhower had his office there. A lot of things happened there. It's convenient to all points around the town, wherever side of town you live in. It's convenient to get there. The site that they're, that they're touting is so wonderful. It's inconvenient to get out there, for one thing. If you have a, if you have a problem walking, you don't want to walk two miles back and forth over that hill and back. It's not convenient at all. The buildings themselves out there, they were designed, as I understand, as designed to be dorms. They would make ideal housing for the large homeless population in Adams County, something that Adams County needs. They need a real official homeless center for the, for the people. Or they could be housing units or county offices, administrative offices. Those buildings are fine, three of them. It's a nice complex. And the only thing I can see why they want to move there is for a few parking spaces. And they think a 21st century building is going to solve everything. It won't because the library we have now has three levels. And they're nicely divided. You have children's area down below, they're off to the side. Children being children, they like to make a lot of noise. It's fine down there. Nobody else can hear them. The main, the main floor is, is quiet for the patrons that like to use it. Administration's upstairs. It's got everything going for it except a few people that don't appreciate what they have. They have library envy. And they think, oh, because it's, it's new and it's, 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 you can just picture what it would look like. A run-of-the-mill, one-story building, way out in the edge of town, inconvenient, and not serving the needs of the people. And I ask you again, what happens to the historic building in the heart of town once, once they're out? Once it's gone, once they're moved? Are they going to put a fast food store there? Are they going to put an amusement park there? What would they put there? A library is an ideal use for that, for that building. And believe me, as one who uses that building all the time, it's perfect for the purposes of the community. And it's not, it's never crowded. There's plenty of space. There's all the space you could possibly want if you appreciate what you have. They don't appreciate what they have. They've got to be in their bonnet about some project about, oh, we've worked on for two, for years, we want a new library. Open up your eyes and look what you have there. You have a wonderful architecture. You have Eisenhower's office was there. You have all sorts of benefits there. And people aren't thinking the whole thing through. They're rushing it through. It's like a rush. They have a stealth campaign to get it approved. Most of the people don't even know this, this project is in, is in being thought about. If you, if you put it up to a public referendum publicly with a lot of advertisement, it'd be, most people are going to say, it's a stupid idea. Keep it where it is and focus on something more urgent. Like I mentioned, the housing for the homeless people. Maybe you don't see them, but they're all around the town. There's more of them every day. They're living on the street. And Adams County should have an official homeless center run properly with all the safeguards and all the, all the proper uses for a homeless shelter. It's a disgrace that people are living under bridges and living on parking benches and they have to sleep on a church floor in the basement somewhere. The mission does a great job out there, but they can only take in so many people. And the way the economy is, you're going to have more people that are running around with backpacks, not knowing where they're going to sleep that night. They have three dorm buildings out there. They're just empty. They're, it would take a minimal, minimum of use to convert them to something useful. All they want to do is knock it down and put up a, like I said, a run-of-the-mill building with parking space. Okay.
Thank you. That's your turn.
All right. Okay. Well, I hope it doesn't fall on deaf ears. This is, this is a serious issue and I think it needs to be thought through a lot more carefully. And I'm, I'm asking you to reject this, this amendment to the zoning store.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Last chance.
I just want to add one thing.
Okay. Can you please state your name again for the moment?
Carolyn Delo, 150 Ridgewood Drive. I just wanted to add to something the two gentlemen mentioned about housing in, in Adams County.
I'm actually going to say this is not a hearing about housing.
Right, I know, but I'm commenting on.
While I appreciate that, the question about this use for this zoning ordinance.
Well, I'm just going to mention that the, if the seminary is proposed for the library, I think it could be well-used as far as how affordable housing. We don't have enough of it. Thank you.
Sure. Any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, we are adjourned. Good evening, everybody.
You weren't there.
Calling to order this meeting of the Gettysburg Borough Council. This is the business meeting for April of 2024. I do not have any opening remarks, so please join me for a moment of silence in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and thank you all for being here tonight. An executive session will be conducted immediately following the adjournment of this evening's general business meeting consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes. One, to provide information and to discuss matters of employment and the terms and conditions of employment of current and prospective employees. And two, to review and discuss matters of borough business which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. It takes us to the approval of minutes and the approval of the agenda for tonight. Would anyone care to make a motion to approve the April 8th, 2024 agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Would anyone care to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meetings from March?
So moved.
Could you read it, please?
A motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting of March 11th, 2024 and councilwork session held on March 25th, 2024 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, any corrections, any omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This takes us to our first public comment section for the evening. This first section is limited to items appearing on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak about something that is not on this agenda, we ask that you save that for the public comment at the end of tonight's meeting. Please use the podium. Please state your name and address of residence. We ask that you limit yourself to five minutes and I will help you do that. And I would just remind the public that public comment is your opportunity to speak your mind to us and we will not engage in debate or dialogue. Any public comment? Seeing none, we will move along. Our current and old business, we start with the planning department and Mr. Whitmore.
Good evening. Copies of the report were in the file. In particular, there is a motion tonight involves a matter that was heard earlier this evening involving the library use in the INS-1 institutional zoning district and publication for the ordinance meeting. The Planning Commission met on March 18th discussing three continued or tabled subdivision land development applications. Of note, we have the Zero Hanover Street, which is a townhome development, the Gettysburg Welcome Center at 340 Baltimore Street. Both of those were extended roughly to the June 30th, July 1st for both. The application to the library subdivision on Seminary Hill was also tabled as the developer is seeking the zoning text amendment. Let's see, moving forward with that, we'll be having some, there was the annual report included for the Planning Commission's material and that should have been included with the report. That format of report, I'm hopeful to change that for next year to be able to show some post-COVID historic data. As we're showing some interesting, naturally with inflation going up, we are having higher construction costs, but we're also showing a slight decline for permits. So being able to see what's going on there from a historic perspective would be a benefit. The zoning hearing board did not meet. We do anticipate some, some special exception and, well, variance, actually, I should say, for the Gettysburg Welcome Center related to a lot issue. And then discussion regarding the tourism train property discussion. That's another issue where the zoning ordinance doesn't really define the practical use at this time. The rezoning would capture that. Ordinances have been provided. The sign ordinance should be coming up at the next workshop meeting. The code enforcement ticketing ordinance, we have a general draft of that that we're still working on with staff, but we should be able to move that forward this spring. And then finally, with regards to local outreach, we did have, had an opportunity to attend the US Department of Housing and Urban Development's present, $2 million check presentation to Safe Housing, Inc., which will benefit the borough. They have about 200 structures, houses identified for environmental hazard. So that, that's pretty significant when you consider the age of our housing stock to be able to figure out what's going on with those structures is something that we would not be able to do without that federal assistance. That concludes my report.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. Whitmore? All right. Would anybody care to make a motion on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to authorize publication for intended enactment at the May 13th, 2024 monthly general business meeting of the Borough Council of a proposed ordinance to be enacted for the purpose of amending the text of the Gettysburg Borough zoning ordinance in order to add a library use as a principal use of land and buildings to be permitted by right in the INS-1 institutional dash one zoning district of the borough of Gettysburg.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to make a comment before we vote.
Please.
I'm always surprised at, sometimes surprised at our, I really appreciate when public comes to speak at public comment. Usually it's Jim Hale and us in the audience. But I, I really think that maybe we need to, as a borough, better communicate to the public on how to be informed of our meetings. And so the best and easiest way that I can suggest to everyone in the public is if you do happen to have internet access, gettysburgpa.gov. The very first thing that pops up on the homepage says upcoming events. And it's literally today, says Borough Council Public Hearing, the time and the date, and Borough Council Business Meeting, the time and the date. And when you click on it in red, it pops up more info, including the agenda. There's so many folks in our public that don't know about the meeting, didn't know it was open to the public, didn't know about public comment that is available at every meeting. They're all open to the public and we really appreciate and encourage your involvement. It's sad to me, though, that some of the comments are just not in our purview. We, we, we under, we hear you. We understand you. But in my mind, and I think the colleagues will agree, the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg does not have authority over the Adams County public library system. We also do not have authority over the Lutheran Seminary. We also do not have authority, while we agree there's a housing issue, we are not a housing authority. No one wants the library to leave the borough. And I hope it doesn't. But we can't say you have to stay in the place that you are staying in. We don't have that authority either. But I really appreciate everybody attending.
Yeah, I would add to that, too, for folks who don't feel informed as to the doings of the borough government. You can also, through our website, sign up for email notifications. You can get every single public meeting agenda emailed to you automatically. So I encourage everybody to sign up for that. It's, it's pretty, pretty seamless and it's easy to do through our website. Any other comments on the motion before us?
I would just like to add, I'm not quite sure where I'm going with this, but I've heard from a lot of constituents since we were planning to vote tonight on the zoning text amendment. And I know that there are a lot of people out in the community who are, who are concerned about the library moving from the heart of the downtown. And that's, it's really the heartbeat of our community in so many ways. And I think libraries have changed over And I think libraries have changed over 10, 20 years. I don't think that they are just, you know, places where you go to check out books anymore. It's... They're really community centers. I attended a wonderful lecture there a few weeks ago on Eddie Plank that was filled. The room was filled. Mrs. Pule mentioned, you know, 10 years ago, 12 years ago. I mean, these discussions have been going on for a long time. And while I won't vote against this tonight, and I agree with my colleague, Mr. Carr, in terms of trying to increase awareness, I'm just wondering, I am still not convinced that we, as a community... I mean, this is something that we shouldn't be pitting the library against the borough or the library against local people who use it, or people who are, you know, in Stravand and Cumberland and don't, you know, maybe are not comfortable parking in the borough. I mean, I'm a Walker, so to me, it's like a non-issue. We have five other branches in the county, so it would really sadden me to see the library move from the heart of downtown. But are there other ways? I know the rec park is something, and Mr. Eastman, I've had a number of conversations today, I don't like to give up. I just wonder, are there ways, is there room to cast the net more broadly to involve more people so the library directors are not out there by themselves having to work on this and solve this problem? But are there ways in which the community at large can address this with the folks up in Harrisburg, for example? Because I know we do have some real restraints in terms of the deed. And I asked, probably not the right question to ask a lawyer, but couldn't we ask for forgiveness instead of permission? That went over really well, let me tell you. But my point is, I would like to see a way in which we could, as I said, cast the net more broadly and build a larger coalition here to try to come up with a solution. I do think that there's still room for a solution. And it may involve, and I've talked to a number of people the last couple of weeks in other official capacities, and so that's where I am with it. And I'll just put that out there. So, thank you.
I would... I agree with what has been said wholeheartedly. I agree. I ask if Mr. Eastman would carefully explain what we're voting on. We're voting on adding a term that will not just apply to the library, correct?
That is correct. It applies to the entire zoning district, if you will. So what you are doing is you're expanding or you would be allowing a library use as a permitted use in the institutional district. A lot of people have indicated that, of course, there is a library at the seminary, there's a library at Gettysburg College, but those would be accessory uses to those institutional, overall institutional purposes. What this would allow would be for a library to be used, operated, in that zone as a principal use. But you're legislating far more broadly than just saying that it's a... That you agree with issues for a certain property and so forth. You're actually taking a look at this from a borough perspective and determining whether or not that use would be a proper use within that zone.
Thank you, because it has been perceived that we are voting tonight whether we are for the library moving or against the library moving. And thank you for clarifying that while it appears that way, we are not.
I would point out that you're still keeping the library use as a permitted use within the Old Town District also, so you're actually just expanding, if you will, where a library use would be permitted, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
This permitted use has also been approved by our planning and the county planning. Is that correct?
It's been recommended, I would say, would be. And that's the proper role and function of our Planning Commission and the County Planning Agency, or the Adams County Office of Planning and Development. And that's all part of this process. We needed a little bit, that's why it took a little bit of time to schedule this public hearing, because you have to notify those bodies with enough time so that they're able to meet, review, and give a recommendation to you folks regarding the proposed text amendment as required under the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. I would also want to say, too, because there's been some concern about public notice and so forth, that all of the requirements under the law were met with regards to providing the public with notice for the public hearing, and of course, also for this Borough Council.
Anyone else? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any further questions for Mr. Whitmore? That takes us to Ms. English.
Thank you, President Moon. We have a few things coming up. We have a Rain Barrel Workshop coming up on May 29th at 5:30 that is free to borough residents. Anyone outside the borough, there will be a nominal fee for that class. May is Preservation Month, so on May 15th, an hour prior to our HARB meeting, we're going to do our yearly awards. We did receive our payment, which was for the 2022 904 grant for recycling. It was just under $9,000. And we are working with the school district in regards to the recycling issues. They are attempting to recycle, but we found several deficiencies, and we are working with their superintendent and the school board to make those corrections and move forward with that. And I just have one motion on the agenda. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. English? Would anybody care to make the HARB motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, HARB, following its review on March 20, 2024, and to grant certificates of appropriateness for the following applications as presented. COA-24-0007, Major Project 139 Carlisle Street, ANSAN Partnership and KPI Technologies, for the replacement of the existing lap and hardy plank siding and trim with cementitius...
Cementitious.
Cementitious borough lap and hardy plank siding
That's a new one.
with a fish scale design and Aztec trim to the front facade only, and to repair in-kind the gutters and downspouts as needed to, as presented to the board in the application dated January 31, 2024. COA-230012, Major Project 337 Carlisle Street, the Al Ball House, Gettysburg College, for the proposed wholesale replacement of all windows to include the in-kind wood replacement of the front west facade windows, the south facade bay window, and maintain the diamond window pattern in the front dormers, and that the remainder of the windows will be aluminum clad as presented in the application dated February 1, 2024. COA-240019, Major Project 219 South Washington Street, Adams County Historical Society, for the demolition of the rear two-story barn and attached shed structures for safety reasons as attested by an engineer as presented in the application dated February 28, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have another motion there from Ms. English.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, HARB, following its review on March 20, 2024, and deny a certificate of appropriateness for the following application as presented. COA-230081, Major Project 148-150 West Middle Street, Made Clean LLC, for the window and door replacement project estimated in the application dated November 7, 2023, as reflected in the notice of violation NOV for window replacement work completed without permits and for a lack of application representation at the March 20, 2024 HARB meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
So just for transparency, this is a motion to deny, and it... Because they did not get permits on work already completed? So is there any... How do we legally go about that? Is this a punishment? Is this saying that they need to go through a different process?
Basically, HARB just wanted to have a record that they did not have a representation at our meeting, which was required by the notice of violation for them to get into compliance. They removed historic windows and replaced them with something that most likely would not have been approved through HARB. So they just wanted an official record that there wasn't representation and that they are still delinquent with their notice of violation, so we have something on record for that. We are still hoping to work with them through the process to, you know, make those repairs or modifications that will meet HARB requirements.
And so there is a process that they need to continue following?
Correct, and that would be through our vote enforcement.
That can't happen until this happens.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any more questions for Mrs. English?
Thank you.
That takes us to Ms. Fissell. Ms. Fissell.
Good evening. You have my report. I would like to... I know it's going into April, but the kiosk doors, two out of three, have been replaced to touchscreen, and they are... Have a little things to work out, but one of them right now isn't printing, but in the meantime, it will text you a receipt. So even though you can't have a printed receipt, it will text you one. So I haven't gotten to all my calls yet to hear any other good things or complaints on either side, but I did just want everybody to be aware. I think they should be coming back this week to finish the third one.
I wanted to share with you and with my colleagues that on Friday, when those first two went in, about an hour later, the Majestic opened for business for the day. We had hundreds of people coming in to pick up tickets for the Second Annual Ken Burns Film Festival, and within five minutes of opening the doors, people were complimenting the new touchscreens in the kiosks. So I just wanted to say, well done. Thank you for getting us through that update and change.
They... I do have... Forty-two LPPs were purchased in March. The reserved spaces are going down currently. They're at 17 in March. That might be some of the college kids bringing cars onto campus or just not having their car for the rest of the time, and I think that's about it.
Any questions?
How many applications have you received for the current bus pilot parking program?
Zero.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
That takes us to the Department of Public Works.
Good evening. Hopefully, you all got my report. Some highlights on my report. We are starting agility projects for the season. The first project's going to be spring street sweeping, so we'll be in surrounding townships cleaning up Anna Skid from the winter and also doing the streets in town here. And that does not include our normal sweeping route that we do every Thursday. We'll be doing other streets, maybe have to take off parking to do some of those streets. We are getting ready to plant 13 shade trees for the Shade Tree Commission this spring. Most of those trees are going to be on the second and third block of York. And I know it's a little early, but I want to get this out, May 20th through May 23rd will be our spring brush collection for the borough. And then we'll be around twice that week to collect brush from residents.
What are those dates again?
May 20th through May 23rd.
Thank you.
How early might one start making a giant pile of brush in the yard without worrying about Pete Griffin walking around and ticketing one?
So that may be a good question for John, but people have already started putting stuff out.
Yeah, I would like to start making a giant brush.
Thank you. So any questions for Robbie?
All right. Thank you, sir.
That takes us to Mr. Claybaugh.
Good evening. You have a copy of my written report. I don't have anything to add outside of the three motions that are on your agenda. And if I could, I'd like to give a couple of remarks on the first motion, and then I'll pause for a decision on that one, and then I'll give a few remarks for the second, too. The first one on the agenda is with regards to Gettysburg Interloop Project. It's for a temporary construction easement. In order to build the sidewalks along Washington Street, we have to adjust the grades just slightly. We have to go back onto the college's property a few feet so that those grade adjustments don't trap water onto their property. We have to pick up their roof leaders, those kind of things. They're just temporary construction easements. We go back to pour some concrete. Once we're done with the project, that property goes back to them. The only temporary construction easements that we need happen to be on college properties. So I believe there's six different addresses there. They're all college properties. There's four different properties where we need these temporary construction easements. A pretty standard business, as usual, with a curb and sidewalk project. We can't go onto private property without their permission. Pause there for maybe a decision on that motion.
Sure. Anybody care to read the motion?
Sure. A motion to authorize the preparation and entry into a written agreement with Gettysburg College relative to its property located at 30, 38, 48, 107, 101, 10, North Washington Street for the purpose of obtaining temporary construction easements and rights of way for construction activities relative to proposed grade transitions in connection to work necessary to construct sidewalks, access entrances, and exits as part of the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B project.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So the second two motions are both with regards to the Welcome Center. The only difference is with these is the first motion there is for the property to the south of the Welcome Center, the second one's for the property to the north of the Welcome Center. The property to the north is just like we just talked about. It's temporary construction easement, allows us to go onto their property till we can complete our construction. Will we return their property into a better condition as we left it? Currently, there's some broken sidewalk in between the two properties. We'll be fixing those two properties. So that motion, again, is just to get a temporary construction easement so that we can have space to be able to complete our construction. The first motion, the property to the south, that's where the escape room is, that one's slightly different in that that also includes, it has a temporary construction easement, but it also includes a permanent easement component. The property line is just over a foot away from the edge of their building. I believe it's around 16 inches in one location, 14 inches in the building. As you can imagine, in Gettysburg, don't line up perfectly square with the right-of-ways in Gettysburg. It's old Civil War buildings, right? So rather than leaving this small sliver of 14 inches worth of grass in between their building, it's best to have the bricks go right up against their building, do a cheek wall against the bottom of the building, and then our idea is to extend those brick, that brick sidewalk that would run along the southern side of the Welcome Center all the way back to the alley so that somebody can access the Welcome Center off of, say, the middle school's parking lot there. So to keep it square, again, we would be crossing their property. So our idea would be to not just have a temporary construction easement on that side of the property, to also have a permanent easement for that sidewalk location. So this... If you would authorize this motion tonight, this would allow us to go to the next step of further laying this out with its property owners, make sure we can get their concurrence. We did have discussions with them. They're aware of this arrangement, didn't have any issues with it up till now, so I can't imagine that we'd get tripped up at this point, but I believe that is it for... Unless you have any questions?
Any questions? Anybody care to make the first motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the preparation and entry into a written agreement with the Gettysburg Works LLC. I'll make a motion to authorize the preparation and entry into a written agreement with the Gettysburg Works LLC relative to real property located three forty-four Baltimore Street for the purpose of obtaining a temporary construction easement, permanent easement agreement and right-of-way for construction activities and work related to the Gettysburg Borough Welcome Center land development project.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the preparation and entry into a written agreement with Alexander Zaharias and Janet Lucille Smith relative to real property located at three thirty-six Baltimore Street for the purpose of obtaining a temporary construction easement and right-of-way for construction activities and work related to the Gettysburg Borough Welcome Center land development project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Claybaugh.
That takes us to Chief Cleny.
Good evening. In my report, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the report. And we also have a motion on the agenda tonight to authorize the Civil Service Commission to establish a list. I would, I would say in your report, you'll notice there's no statistics for our co-responder this month. She was out on training and didn't get back in time to give me those for the report. So I will report those out next month. She had a busy month as we did. And I would just, I would just point out that all the numbers across the board for March of twenty-four as compared to March of twenty-three were significantly higher, the exception of felony arrests, which is a good thing. And our domestics were down significantly, which we were happy about. So busy, I think a little bit of reprieve we got in February caught up to us in March. So otherwise, we're still chugging along, if you will. And again, be happy to answer any questions. But that's about it.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for the chief? Anybody care to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize and provide notification to the Civil Service Commission of the Borough of Gettysburg to request the certification of an eligibility list by the Civil Service Commission for the position of entry-level patrol officer of the Gettysburg Borough Police Department.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Just to remind everybody what this means, we are experiencing a retirement, a well-earned retirement in the department. And we need to begin the process of replacing that officer. Hiring police is a lengthy and involved process. It takes cooperation between multiple departments in the borough. It takes close cooperation between the chief and the manager and the mayor and council. And it is a multi-stepped process involving the Civil Service Commission. What we would be doing here tonight is instructing the Civil Service Commission to begin the process to create a list, which means advertising the position, posting it appropriately, and then setting dates for testing where we would hope to receive the applications of either certified and qualified officers or people willing to go to the academy, at which case we would be looking to fill that position in the coming months, but most likely in the new year. Unfortunately, it is a lengthy process, and this is one of many steps that needs to happen.
If I may add, we hope to stretch the process out a little longer this time to give a little bit further of a advertising period to attract qualified applicants. If most of the council was here but the ones who weren't, we kind of, it was kind of a compact process last time and quickly so we could get folks into the police academy. Well, there's no way we're going to get folks into a police academy July first this year with this now. So I think we have a little more time to reach out and incorporate some advertising mechanisms, if you will, that we wanted to use last time and just didn't have that opportunity because of the tighter process.
All right. Did we, we had the motion, didn't we? Yeah. Any other questions for the chief? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything further for the chief? Thank you, sir. That takes us to the officer of the manager, Ms. Stoll.
I don't have anything to add. There's a lot of motions down there for council for some approvals for the ABCs, appointments and boards and commissions.
And Mr. Gabel.
Later on, you'll have a motion to award a contract for rental of heavy equipment. Ms. Stoll's borough secretary did open our bid today and the incorporated. So whoever makes that motion could insert that name, C.E. Williams, Sons and Incorporated. Year-to-date, the borough is running just under $700,000 deficit. The reason that is currently the case is the borough has already transferred, if you look at our budget, $347,000 from the general fund to capital reserve. And the borough has not yet begun the process of drawing down ARPA funds to repay salaries in the provision of government services as enacted by Congress. So if you remember, the borough budgeted just over a million dollars of ARPA funds this year for that purpose. So these numbers will quickly reverse in the next couple of months as taxes come in and then we begin to reimburse those salaries. Year-to-date, the borough has 2.3 million in the general fund. That includes 1 million in a reserve account for emergency reserve funds. And you can see currently 436,000 in capital projects. Those are restricted funds for specific projects. Debt service, 276,000. That also has some restricted money in anticipation of a balloon payment for debt service in 2026. Capital reserve, just over 1.4 million available. Locut fuels, just under 800,000 available for roadwork and other projects. Revolving loan continues to sit out there with 300,000 in it. Not a whole lot of use in there, but as we get into the sidewalk ordinance, we'll be talking about that pretty aggressively. And of course, you can see 1.67 million remains in the ARPA funds account, which, as a reminder, needs to be allocated by the end of this year, needs to be expended by the end of 2026. I would add, before we get to motions, there was an accident in East Surfing Alley as you exit on the Baltimore Street over the weekend where a delivery truck ran into a fire escape, thus actually pulling the fire escape off of the side of the building. Our UCC code official didn't inspect that today and has deemed it unsafe. And it's taking immediate action to remediate that situation. But that section of East Surfing Alley will remain closed for hazard until such time as we can figure out how to make it safe for people and pedestrians and cars to go down there.
I saw a notice somewhere that there was, that they were able to look at, I think the police were able to look at video footage of that. Is that, were you able, were they able to identify the truck?
I'll defer to Chief Cleny on any investigative information that can or cannot be released.
It is my understanding they had all the information they needed. It was not a hit-and-run, but I didn't know, I can't verify that. I don't know for sure. But it was, it carries a hit-and-run to my knowledge. So that would mean to me that they did identify the people that struck the fire escape.
I also had a question about on the budget. What is the Company K monument repair for like 350 bucks or something?
Yeah, so if you remember, we used to have a specific fund in the borough for Company K endowment.
It kind of is vaguely familiar. Is that the one over on Lincoln and Carlisle or no?
The monument itself is on the exterior wall of O'Man.
Oh, that's right. Okay, downtown, right, okay.
And so a couple of years ago, council moved those funds to be administered by the Adams County Community Foundation.
That's right.
That money, the borough received a check from that endowment. And that's restricted for those, for that purpose. There is no anticipated maintenance this year, so that'll just sit there as restricted funds. Probably will be added to next year with another, you know, check that we get from, for interest.
Thank you, thanks for the reminder.
Same with Eichel Berger-Stahli. You'll see that was theirs.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Anything further?
No.
All right, so we have a whole bevy of motions there. Anybody who wants to start, please dive on in.
A motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a COLA increase.
I'll make a motion to authorize a COLA increase for retired police pensioner Craig Staley to be paid from the police pension plan effective March one, 2024.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Whoever would like to make this motion, please remember to insert C.E. Williams and Sons Construction in the blank.
I'll make a motion to award a contract to C.E. Williams and Son, Inc. as the lowest qualified responsible and responsive bidder for the rental of heavy construction vehicles and equipment is set forth in the borough's specifications and instructions to bidders.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
This is something we do annually, correct? This is simply to allow us to have a vendor on the books should we need to rent or purchase or buy any sort of construction equipment in the event of a serious emergency. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This next one is for the services of the lobbying firm.
I'll make a motion to authorize the entry into an agreement with Cozen O'Connor, Public Strategies for the Provision of Lobbying and Public Affairs Support for Grant and Other Funding Strategies for Borough Projects.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just quickly before our council discusses, earlier tonight, the Stormwater Authority did meet and they committed $2,000 monthly to employ the services of Cozen O'Connor. We're waiting on a word from the municipal authority as to if they'd like to participate in that and at what level.
Excellent. Thank you to our friends on the Stormwater Authority for that. Any other discussion? For the benefits of those watching, we have an aggressive and ambitious capital improvement plan that spans years and tens of millions of dollars. And in order for us to complete that, we need help from state and federal agencies. And we have started to realize that we need help with our grant applications. So we already employ a consultant to help with the writing of those applications. And this is going to be a short-term, temporary, perhaps long-term relationship with a lobbyist to help us get the appropriate meetings with the appropriate people at the state and federal level to make sure that the value of the projects we are proposing is known by the people making the decision on the allocation of these funds.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, please, is ABC appointments.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 040824-1, appointing Brian Hodges as an alternate member of the Gettysburg Code Enforcement Appeals Board for a three-year term of office expiring in March 2027.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I heard Mr. Berger first. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have something I'd like to say. Ms. Lawson and I were tasked by the council president to interview candidates to fill several ABC authorities, boards and commissions positions, as you see in these final five motions. We were struck as we did this, how many ABC positions there are for a town this small and how worrisome it is, will people step up to become candidates for these positions? Well, I'm delighted that we do. We folks do. Citizens come forward. I thank those who do volunteer to give their time for such positions. And we, I think Ms. Lawson joins me, we are pleased to recommend the adoption of these motions to promote.
If I could just add too, just piggyback on my colleague, there are ten authorities, boards and commissions. And you can find them right on the top of the borough website, you know, right in the drop-down menu. Click, there they are. And Mrs. Butterfield is correct, there are, I counted, they range in anywhere from three to like seven on average on these ABCs. So we're looking at about sixty to sixty-five volunteers, mostly in the borough. There are a couple of them that do allow for outside of, you know, in Adams County, outside of the borough itself. So we do really appreciate that. Three of them are, they've re-upped, Robin Fitzpatrick, Caleb McClure and Scott Hancock. But the others are new, so thank you.
How many applications did you get this round to interview? How many did you interview?
We probably received maybe a dozen, maybe?
I was going to say.
Or more. And people could check off. The application is not easy to find. In fact, maybe Mrs. Stoll can explain where to find that on the website. We actually have been sending it out to people. But people can check off which ones that they're interested in, so.
And we do have them in our lobby as well, so people can just stop by and pick up in the lobby as well.
So for those viewing at home who might be interested, you can look on the website to see which ones, the ten of them. Some of them meet as needed, others meet on a monthly basis. It's not a lot of heavy lifting. Some do have special training. But it's a great way to get involved in the community. And so I encourage you to look at that. We're also, Mrs. Butterfield and I are keeping kind of a farm team, if you will. So people who have expressed interest, but we may not have openings. I'm not going to jinx it tonight by telling you where we are. Hopefully next month, we'll be able to say. But we do have people who are stepping up and saying, yes, in the future, if there's an opening, we'd like to serve. So that's really great. Then we're not scrambling. We really do have people that have expressed an interest. And we're encouraging people to attend meetings as well, so. And that includes everything from planning, zoning, human relations to, you know, GMA. So the real wide-ranging Shade Tree Commission.
Is there a max on how many ABCs someone can volunteer for? I know Mrs. Butterfield volunteers for many, many, many things. Many, many, many meetings.
No, you can volunteer for all ten if you want. It was unlikely we would place somebody on multiple at the same time, especially since some of them have overlapping fields of interest. Like you wouldn't want to put somebody on zoning and planning at the same time since they inform each other in some ways.
And there are some legal requirements too that allow, or essentially only authorize, like for the zoning hearing board, essentially you can't be on multiple. You've got to be on the ZHB.
And we are trying to actively recruit diverse members of the community to serve on the ABCs too. That's really important. So, you know, everything from gender to, you know, fill in the blank.
Yeah, the easiest way to find that application, if you're looking for it on the website, is just in the search window, type in the word volunteer. It's the first result that comes up.
Why didn't I think of that?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next.
A motion to appoint Robin Fitzpatrick to the Board of the Gettysburg Area Recreation Authority for a five-year term of office expiring in May 2029.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 040824-2, appointing Caleb McClure as a member of the Gettysburg Borough Local Human Relations Commission for a five-year term of office expiring in April 2029.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the next.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 040824-3, appointing Scott Hancock as an alternate member of the Gettysburg Borough Local Human Relations Commission for a three-year term of office expiring in April 2027.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the final motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolutions number 040824-4, appointing Brendan Cushing-Daniels to the Board of the Gettysburg Municipal Authority in order to complete the remainder of the unexpired five-year term of Timothy Good, whose term expires in January 2027.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I'll just mention that Tim Good has served the GMA for well over a dozen years, and he and his family moved to Chambersburg, so we thank Tim Good for his service.
That was 26 years.
How many?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. I know it was a long time, so. And Brendan Cushing-Daniels has an economic background, so I think he'll be a good person to serve on this GMA.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This brings us to our liaison reports. First, we stop in with Ms. Sellers from Main Street Gettysburg.
Good evening, everyone. Copy of my report, but I'll highlight just a couple of things. One, Main Street is really glad to be partnering with the Borough, with Stormwater Authority, and hopefully with GMA on the Cozen contract. It's been some really interesting conversations about, and from an organization that does an awful lot of grant requests at multiple levels, I think this is an incredible opportunity to strategize forward on some of the long list of projects that really is going to impact the Borough in years to come, so thank you for allowing me that opportunity to be part of that. Want to announce just publicly in this forum that we named our 2023 Volunteer of the Year, that was Justin Harmon. He's just an incredible young person in our community, works tirelessly, gives of himself, really interacts with the community, with businesses, brings people on board, has great ideas, isn't afraid to get his hands dirty and be out there and do things, all without really any great thanks, but this is just a great opportunity for me to say thank you, not only to Justin, but to the about $55,000 worth of volunteer work that Main Street alone brings to the Borough. And I say that knowing that there are dozens of other organizations that bring volunteers to our community, so I'm sure that it's millions of dollars that are brought in selfless service to us and to our citizens. And then finally, I'm really excited to announce, you may already know, but we did get congressional appropriation for the Welcome Center, so 1.27436 is coming, hopefully in the month of May. This kind of finally puts things on an actual timeline, and we are working through that. I'm very thankful we're working with the Planning Commission, certainly with the architects and the engineers to see where we are at, including things like the approval of the external utilities that we're working on with Mr. Claybaugh and the neighboring properties who have been very cooperative, so we are moving down that road. We'll keep you certainly well informed. Next steps is going to be the Endowment Campaign, there's a $1 million goal in that, and the goal of that particular program is to make sure that we can provide as much tax relief for this project, so it can live in perpetuity without becoming a tax burden to the citizens of Gettysburg. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you all for your support.
Wonderful.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, now, before you walk away, too, I will say, I've had people coming up to me on the street and congratulating us on that award, saying, oh my God, you did a great job, oh my gosh, the manager's done a great job, and I just want to say this publicly, Jill Sellers did a great job securing this grant for us, so thank you. All right, Mr. Carr with GARA.
Farmer's Market, opening day is Saturday, April 27th, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., that is the Adams County Farmer's Market opening day at the Gettysburg Rec Park. And also on Tuesday, is that correct? I guess so, Tuesday, April 23rd, primary voting. That seems wrong. Is it correct? All right, primary voting day at the rec park, it's already here. Spring.
Word two would be at the rec park, yeah, or word three, word three would be.
Sorry, the whole, yeah, the whole day is election day. Word one is bar hall. Or, yeah.
Yep, and word two would be at the cub, that's right. All right, thank you. GMA, Mr. Berger.
Yes, GMA voted unanimously to approve the $225,000 for the Gettysburg Interloop Infrastructure Project. It is infrastructure that would need to be replaced anyway, in the grand scheme of things. Hopefully, we can replicate the successful project we did on South Street, working with Columbia Gas in the Borough. It was needed to facilitate the stormwater piping going down the street as well, so that's going forward. We did discuss the Cozen &amp; O'Connor Public Strategies, we didn't come down to a conclusion on that, we're going to discuss it again Monday. Be talking how, you know, if we are going to contribute and how much, so we'll know for the next time. And the sewer, the interceptor, just stand by saying it's getting pretty close to be put out to bid, so that project's getting pretty close.
It's going to be huge.
Yep.
All right, thank you, sir. Mrs. Butterfield, the Steinware Bid.
The Steinware Bid Group had a strategic plan meeting on March 12th, and I'll join the Jill Sellers Complimentary Committee today. By drawing up a template to work from, that makes such projects move more smoothly and more rapidly, and Jill did make up such an update of the last plan from some years ago, and that made the process go smoothly. At our regular meeting last Thursday, discussion was focused on a survey that is going out to businesses on Steinware about their satisfaction with the way things are happening, what they would like to see in the future, what they particularly liked about what happened in the past, and again, the Sellers taking care of that survey, there was lots of discussion on how best to encourage businesses to fill it out, and it was determined that personal contact rather than just mailing it out was the most effective way. From me, as far as announcing things going on in the council, I mentioned the Seki Kahara meetings, progress that we've been having, I announced our events, the electric device turn-in and shredding events coming up, and they expressed interest in participating in both of those. And then again, Jill talked about the Christmas Festival progress, the information that she made up for them is really astounding at the success that the festival has and what we hope will continue. And her data from last time, over 12,000 people attended the 2023 Festival, 10% stayed one night, 30% stayed two nights, and 19% stayed three nights, so lots of really good, interesting information, and a good meeting by bid.
Excellent, thank you. Mayor Freeling, the Adams County Boroughs Association.
One good thing is, the meeting time has changed from 7:00 to 6:30. You don't think there'll be more people there that way. And you're going to start having roundtable discussions, anybody can come and get information on how other boroughs or townships do business, if you have a question, I'll also give you a question, and I can gather the information and send it back to you. So, the next meeting is May 20th at 6:30.
Excellent, thank you. PM, I assume that's why it's good news?
It's A.
It seems like bad news if it's A, all right. Back to Mrs. Butterfield for COG.
Yes, the Adams County Council of Governments Group continues to have very good attendance at their meetings. The, I serve on the Collaboration Committee Subcommittee, and we are devising, authoring a survey on cybersecurity and how different businesses are addressing the issue of cybersecurity. The, I authored a cover letter that we're sending out with the survey, and that is being reviewed and edited by the group. Then, anecdotally, at a different meeting, one of the businesses came up to me and said, wow, they are being attacked by scammers trying to get into their system, and that this focus on it is coming in a very timely manner. That was a local business, so be alert, be careful, be vigilant.
Excellent.
May I add something?
Certainly.
At the May 20th meeting, EMA Director Warren Bladen will be there to speak, and all boroughs and townships will be invited.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Lawson, Happy.
Happy met last Tuesday, April 2nd. There's an updated website which shows upcoming rides and work on Gettysburg Interloop. There's also discussion that there's a project going on along Boyd School Road, back in that area, Table Rock, with, I think, solar panels, and because of that, it appears that they will be responsible for putting in a bike lane out there, which is something that we just learned about last week, and that's exciting because it will be actually double the amount of space, there is double the amount of space available, which would allow for pedestrian and bicyclists who will be out near the high school, which would be great, and make connections with the Loop, which is great. That's all I have for the report, thanks.
ACTPO, Mrs. Butterfield.
Yes, the February meeting was canceled, our next ACTPO meeting will be on the 24th of this month, and at that meeting, updates on changes and developments from Eisenhower Boulevard and Adamas Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan will be discussed. There will also be discussion on changes to ACTPO bylaws, we've all received copies of the former bylaws, so that we can decide what changes might be in the air. And an interesting discussion is going to take place, an interesting program, on controlling outdoor advertising, its content, its size, its location, and the number thereof, that will be an interesting discussion.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Anything on the trail feasibility study?
Well, I did talk to Dennis Hickathier, I mention this every few months, really, our trail feasibility study was complete over a year ago, and we're in partnership with the National Park Service, and it's still stalled with their study.
Sure.
I know there's a new superintendent, it'd be maybe a good time to try to connect and meet with them, but that's still where we are with that.
Excellent. Other reports, recycling, fire, EMS, Mrs. Butterfield, did you have anything on recycling?
I do. We had an interesting thing going on this month. The Borough Recycling Committee is sponsoring the recyclable art contest and exhibit that's now taking place at the Arts Council. I invite everyone to stop by and see the wonderful pieces of art that students throughout the county at schools of all levels have put out there. The judges were, and we thank them, Miss Jill Sellers of Main Street Gettysburg, Matt Crowner, Jack Henshaw, they judged last Friday and determined that the winner, what was her name, Violet Beloto of sixth grade, was the first-place winner. The sponsors for the event are Columbia Gas, Open Mines, Gettysburg Green Gathering, and the Borough Recycling Committee. There were 69 entries, anticipating your asking, there were 69 entries, and yes, the sixth grader Violet Belito was the best in show.
Excellent. I did not have an EMS report in my file, did anybody?
You didn't get it yet.
All right. All right, that takes us to elected officials' comments. Madam Mayor, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I attended the PML Summit in Harrisburg, and one of the things that we're looking at is they're launching a Senate Bill 37 that prohibits self-renewal. But, it's like, to me, it's, you get a 12-month warning period if you're caught, you have to be enforced by the state police and fined, maybe $50, that's where it is right now. And also, I spoke to a mayor from another city that has a college, and I didn't realize there's a group called International Town Down Association to help improve the relationships between college and town, and I think I might rally down with her to go to a meeting in Baltimore, just to check it out.
Cool.
Yeah, I thought that was interesting. But she has a really good, she graduated from Bloomsburg, Bloomsburg, anyway, wherever she is, and a lot of people who work in her city went to school there. So, yeah, but I'd really like to look into that, might be a good idea.
Cool.
And I'm in the process of scheduling another meeting on campus, and the chief is going to come with me.
Okay.
Any else wants to come, you're more than welcome. Just meet and greet the students and listen to what their concerns are.
Cool, when is that?
I'm going to be scheduling it tomorrow night.
Great, thank you. All right, any other elected officials?
I just want to, well, first of all, just compliment the people that were involved with the Second Annual Ken Burns Film Festival this weekend, it was quite successful. I attended a session Friday night and two on Saturday, two live sessions on Saturday. Friday night, the high school was packed, Majestic staff did a great job, the Historical Society, Jake Borat, Susan Eisenhower was involved, and I spoke to a lot of people who I was either sitting next to or just talking to that were from, you know, Virginia, California, the eastern shore, brought in a lot of people who were staying in town, eating at our local restaurants for lunch and dinners, and staying in hotels and B&amp;Bs, so that was, it was great. The other thing I just want to mention, because we did have the public hearing earlier tonight about the zoning with the library, and I just want to just put out this again and remind people that we are trying our best to make the Borough of Gettysburg a walkable town, where people can come, if you're coming from out of town, people will come, park in either the parking garage or on the street, we've got, the app is really getting really refined and very easy to use, so there's meter parking. And where the library is, I kind of, I kind of take umbrage a little bit, because I don't see the, I mean, I said earlier, I walk, but I do drive also 50% of the time, and I don't find parking a problem. If I need to use the library and they have like six or seven slots back there if they're unavailable, there are two small municipal lots on Middle Street that are available besides the parking garage, and there's parking all around on Baltimore and the side streets where you use meters, and so I don't, I have trouble sometimes thinking of this as a town that has a parking problem, I don't see it that way at all. And I think that we work hard, and we're going to continue to work, to try to encourage, you know, better signage and direct people where they can park, and that once they're here, they walk. Literally, from the end where the college is in the north end to where Lefever Street is, where the schools are, you know, it's a mile long, and so, and there are accessible parking spots for people who have mobility issues. I just, I have trouble thinking about this town as a parking problem, but like most Americans who are in love with the automobile, and we see this on campus with our students, you know, I will be walking in the morning and see students leaving on Lincoln in their car, and by the time I get around to, you know, Washington Street with my dog, they're still searching for parking because they want to park right in front of where their class is, and I think that's human nature, I think people come to Gettysburg and they want to eat at a certain locale, or they want to shop at a certain place, and they want to pull right up if they could to the door. And I think we, I think we have to stop equating quality of life with good parking, I think we need to think about quality of life with, you know, good walkability and being a community where you can walk, and we should be happy about that, and that's, it promotes so many things, from healthy lifestyle to just getting the darn cars off the road, so, you know, coming into town and parking in a certain spot, a little lot, a half a block from the library, in a municipal lot for an hour, doesn't seem to me a big hardship, so I just want to, that may not be popular, but I'm putting it out there, so, thank you. So, thank you.
Yeah, no, I will thank you for pointing out that there is a municipal lot within a book's throw of the library.
Two municipal lots.
That's right.
The churches probably don't want to hear, but their lots are empty and, you know, during the day. So, you know, I think deals could be struck there too, maybe. But that's it.
Any other elected officials' comments? Mrs. Butterfield.
At Home in Adams County, met on March 25th. Stacy Rice, their director, thanked those who had written letters of support for the grant which SCAP applied for on behalf of At Home. It was to the Gettysburg Foundation, and it was entitled the Adams County Smart Growth Project. The Borough of Gettysburg wrote one of those letters of support, and we accept their, their thanks. And then I attended the Garden Club meeting also on March 25th to thank them. I did thank them for their beautification of the square and how much that is appreciated and how much, how many comments we get from tourists about the lovely presentation that the square makes, and it's because of the Garden Club. The program that day was on honeybees, and after I got over my creepy crawly feeling at looking at all those slides of bees, it was very informative and enjoyable.
Anybody else down here?
Yes. Two things. There has in the last, at least, at least the last year, probably longer, been some public comment and, well, maybe not in person, but comment to me from others. And, no, there has been in person, several, regarding the trees in town, Shade Tree. If you are one of those that are interested in trees or not interested in trees or have concern about or interest in their process, they have a meeting tomorrow here in this building, 7:00 p.m., and it is uped to the public. Again, Shade Tree Commission meets tomorrow here in this building, 7:00 p.m., if you are interested. I've also received some comments from public, so I want to go on the record that they would like parking back on the agenda. There's no surprise there. Thank you.
Cool. All right. I wanted to say something too. One of the responsibilities for my position is, I'm no longer allowed to turn my phone off at night. Like, in this position, there can be those middle-of-the-night calls when something terrible happens. And this month, we did have something terrible happen on Middle Street. There was a horrible fire. And unfortunately, one of our neighbors, a friend, did perish in that fire. I got the phone call around 4:30 from Manager Gable, letting me know what was going on. We discussed whether we needed to wake up the rest of council or let the situation resolve itself. I opted to let you sleep. However, a lot of people in this room didn't sleep. Manager Gable didn't sleep. Robbie Harbaugh didn't sleep. Chad was awake. The chief and his team were there. People who got the call in the middle of the night showed up and fought that fire, put it out before the entire building was lost. Chad's team did structural analysis on the building. We found out the building was unsafe. The chief's team worked to keep the streets safe. We had to keep it closed for several days until the building could be braced in such a way that it, the danger of it falling into the street had passed. The first, the Red Cross helped rehome many of the people who were displaced by the fire. And I just want to thank everybody who was involved, everybody who got out of bed in the middle of the night, our fire department, our volunteer fire department, who responded within minutes to a fire that was out of control. And there was no damage to the surrounding buildings. And it is sad that somebody did lose their life, but a lot more people could have. So, I just want to say thank you to everybody who was involved in the response that night. These are big jobs. They're important. They require people with cool heads and experience and expertise, and I just want to say thank you all. It takes us back to public comments. The second section is not restricted to items on the agenda. You may speak about any topic you like. We ask that you restrict yourself to five minutes. Please use the podium. Give us your name and your residence address. And I will remind you that this is your chance to speak. It is not a debate with council. We will not answer questions or engage in dialogue.
While we're waiting on folks who might want to make public comment, I forgot to mention in my report that the spring newsletter will be coming out later this week. So, look for those in your mailbox.
I also might add real quick, Charles, and maybe you could expand on this a little bit. There's a construction project going to begin through the rear of the building tomorrow, so the parking lot will be kind of re-appropriated. There will still be two spots for visitors, but for the most part, the parking lot will be closed off.
Excellent.
And it'll go through.
The ADA space and two public spots will be still available.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Siperlee.
I'm Sue Siperlee. I live at 314 North Stratton in Gettysburg. And coincidentally, there's been a good amount of talk about public, public knowledge of what's going on tonight and how they can access things at the borough. At a previous meeting, I spoke about the need to have the Planning Commission meetings broadcast on community media during 2024 in particular. Topics coming up in 2024 include the rezoning effort. There's a steering committee that meets monthly with the consultant to direct the drafting of the new zoning ordinance and maps. There's no information about who's on the committee, when the meetings are, and the public is not allowed to attend even just to listen. When they feel that there is something for the Planning Commission to review, it is provided and discussed, but there's no recording or broadcasting of what is said. This provides a disadvantage for citizens, the press, and staff, and there will be no video to refer to in the future. There's no recent information from the consultant on the borough website. The Getty Station redevelopment project will be reviewed and voted on by the Planning Commission. It will not come to council for approval. There will be public interest, and there should be a record of the discussion and deliberations. Adams County Library site plan may happen in 2024, and that will be decided on by the Planning Commission. 2024 is an extremely important year for the future of Gettysburg. I would hope the council can discuss this at the next workshop meeting and find the money to provide this public service and permanent record. I'm sure you can find it somewhere in the budget. I also hope any residents listening tonight will contact their council representatives in support of broadcasting the Planning Commission meetings in the interest of public information and involvement. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Stephen Voorhees, North Washington Street. I'd just like to commend Councilwoman Lawson for her observations about the centrality of the library and how it's convenient to get there. And I think a lot of people have the same concerns as she does, and I'm commending her for her courage to speak up, maybe against the tide, but I think things need to be said. It needs to be thought out. And what happens to the library if it were to move? Is it going to be knocked down? Going to have some other business establishment there, a fast food restaurant, an amusement park? Who knows? It's a historic part of Gettysburg's story, and I think it needs to be kept and dignified use. And so, again, I just thank her for speaking up about the issue of walking accessibility. A lot of people need to get out of their vehicles and walk around, you know? But, okay, so anyway, appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment?
Scott English, business owner, 6668 West High Street. I reside at 1210 Pumping Station Road in Gettysburg. I would like to echo Ms. Siperlee's comments that as important as this rezoning effort that's going on right now, I believe the meetings for both the Steering Committee and the Planning Commission should be televised. I can get a telephonic email and text when GMA wants me to conserve water. We need to let the property owners that are going to have their zoning impacted, up or down, as far as their right to use that property. They should be notified by a text message, phone call, or somebody from the borough officially that their zoning is going to change. That's the least we can do for both the residents, and I know we do have a lot of out-of-town property owners, but they should be availed of that information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone further? All right. Seeing none, we will adjourn to executive session. Thank you.